It helps us with that.
Welcome, everyone. We're gonna call this Muscatine City Council Meeting, May 5th, 2016, to order. Fran, will you please do the roll call?
House Members Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Biggs.
Present.
Saldado. Finem.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
Six Presidents, one accent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. Can you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We would like to start tonight with Sister Cities' presentation from John Dubby.
Good evening, Mayor Diana Broderston, Council Members and City Administrator. It's an honor again to come back all the time and present to you what we have been doing, but this time it's a little bit different. This time, we have been busy for almost two weeks with an educational delegation from one of our sister cities, from Ramallah, Palestine. We have four educators with us and the fifth represent the city of Ramallah. Basically, they came here as a result of a project that many community organizations here in Muscatine decided to be part of it. For example, Muscatine School District, the AEA, MCC, the College, the Sister City, the Chamber of Commerce, and also, we are here to thank you also for always, you know, for your support to our organization. They did a lot. They learned a lot. We kept them busy from almost eight to five every day, attending workshops about special education intervention, early intervention, and so on. And they had the chance to tour Muscatine. They had the chance to visit communities around us. And also, they spent one day in Des Moines. They participated in a workshop that was sponsored by the Department of Education. I don't want to talk much here except to say thank you, thank you, thank you for your support. They will be on their way to Ramallah tomorrow. They had a great time, but if it's okay, if I can ask for maybe a minute or two to ask Hama, who is the lead in this group, to just say a couple words to you. And after that, we always say thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of Ramallah Municipality, we'd like to thank you for your invitation and giving us the chance to experience the educational system here in Muscatine. And we'd like to, the teachers' delegation also would like to thank you. Now, the teachers' delegation are from four private schools. Hanin Halqawi from the Lutheran School, Naveen Farah from the Greek Catholic School, Natalie Zaur from St. Joseph's School, and Aida Shunnara from the Evangelical School. We'd like to thank you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to present a simple gift to the mayor.
We have just a small token gift from our city for each of you, and thank you so much, just as a small keepsake. I know your two weeks have been quite busy.
Thank you.
We have something to read on your airplane right now. All about Muscatine. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Certainly. And thank you, John. I know you, this was over a year in the making, and I know there's been a lot of people behind the scenes working very hard to make this two weeks happen. And thank you so much again for coming. And safe travels home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Moving on in the agenda tonight, do we have any communications from other citizens? Someone who's in the audience that would like to bring up something besides something that's already on the agenda tonight? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Paul Airline. I'm actually from the Quad City Dam Court area. I am a member of the Optimist Organization. I'm with the District of Iowa Optimists. I am actually the new club builder for them. I want to thank the council, Your Honor, and having me here tonight. Once upon a time, optimism flourished here in the Muscatine area, and we would like to return that. We would like to start a new Optimist Club here in Muscatine. For those of you unfamiliar with the organization, we are a service organization, a volunteer service organization. All of our projects focus on youth in the area. We're well-known for working on youth activities, working with the local government, and also working with the local school system. What sets us above and beyond some other organizations is the fact that we promote optimism as a way of life. To the members of the council, I left out a little brochure, which by the way is also a membership if you care to join. A little plug in there. But it also has on a statement that's called "The Optimist Creed." And if anyone would like a copy of it, I'd certainly be happy to provide you. It's a form of living that we all try to live up to. Unfortunately, it's sometimes hard to get there, but what it does is basically promotes optimism as a way of life. There have been some pretty good studies that show that optimism adds about 2.5 years to your average lifespan. In addition to promoting optimism in the way of life, we also develop a philosophy to promote an active and interest in good government and civic affairs, promote respect for the law, promote patriotism, work for international court and friendship among people. So it's really neat to find these people here because it kind of just fits into what we do. And to engage and encourage the development of youth in the belief of giving to oneself and service to others would advance the well-being of the kind and the community in life and the world in general. We will be starting some formation meetings here coming up soon in May. If anyone has any questions or would like to get involved, please feel free to contact me. Again, my name is Paul Airline. It's O-E-H-R-L-E-I-N. And I'm going to do something silly and give my phone number out to everybody. It's 563-320-1682. And again, thank you very much for having me here. I appreciate it. We're looking forward to coming to Muscatine and to serving the youth in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to talk about anything not already on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item five, the following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes Items 6A, Items 8A through M, Items 9A through D, Item 11K, Items 12A through G, and tonight's bills totaling $1,789,283.95?
So moved.
Second. Alan, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved with all ayes. As part of the consent agenda, we had some mayoral proclamations, which I'd like to read at this time. The first one is the National Day of Prayer. Today is the National Day of Prayer, and whereas National Days of Prayer have been part of our country's heritage since 1775, and whereas in 1988, the United States Congress unanimously designated the first Thursday in May as National Day of Prayer. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is a time that has been set aside to give thanks for the many blessings our country has received and to recognize the need for a renewal of moral values and heavenly guidance for community leaders, and whereas it is fitting that we focus on the need for healing and reconciliation within our nation, now therefore I, Diana Broderston, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2016, as National Day of Prayer in the City of Muscatine. Thank you so much, everyone who helped with National Day of Prayer. We had it out on the lawn today. It was quite a nice service. The next proclamation is whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated the week of May 15th through 21st of 2016 as National Police Week and Wednesday of that week as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and whereas the members of the Muscatine Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Muscatine Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore I, Diana Broderston, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, call upon all citizens of our community and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through 21st, 2016, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Muscatine to observe Wednesday, May 18th, 2016, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. I would like to thank all of our police officers, Chief Talkington, for everything that they do for us in protecting us every day. The third one is Buddy Poppy Days. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the VFW Post 1565 and the Auxiliary have pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower, now therefore I, Diana Broderston, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 27th and 28th of 2016 as Buddy Poppy Days, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on these days. Thank you to all of our servicemen and women. National Preservation Month. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, now therefore I, Diana Broderston, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as National Preservation Month, and call upon the people of the City of Muscatine to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in the special observance. Thank you. We're gonna move on in the agenda to Item 7A, Public Hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed declaration of 303 Brook Street as surplus property and authorizing its disposal. This parcel was acquired by the City of Muscatine in 1984, and since that time, it has been maintained by the city. Prior to declaring this property as a surplus, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing no comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to close the public hearing is approved with all ayes. Item 7B, this public hearing concerns the proposed declaration of 307 Brook Street as surplus property and authorizing its disposal. The parcel was acquired by the City of Muscatine in 1984, and since that time, it has been maintained by the city. Prior to declaring this property as surplus, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close, Your Honor.
Thank you. Second. Alan, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to close the public hearing is approved with all ayes. Moving on, 11A, Resolution Declaring 303 Brook Street as Surplus Property and Authorizing Its Disposal. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we table this issue until a later date.
Thank you, Alan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No discussion.
There's no discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All ayes. 11B, is there a motion, I'm sorry, resolution declaring 307 Brook Street as surplus property and authorizing its disposal. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
Your Honor, I'd like to offer a motion to table this issue until a later date.
Thank you, Alan.
Second, Your Honor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 11C of the agenda. Presented for City Council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter V of the City Code pertaining to automated traffic enforcement. The revision is intended to remove any doubt as to whether the city ordinance allows mobile speed enforcement, and also includes the addition of a speed category to be used while conducting speed enforcement in school and construction zones. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Phil, any discussion?
I have one question. On the information given out, there's a table of fines, and I was just wondering, is the six to 10 mile an hour, is that just reserved for school zones, or is that officer's discretion?
School and construction zone.
It doesn't specifically say that, should it?
Yes.
Doesn't the text part?
Doesn't the text, but I just...
We'll provide that amendment in reading number two. We'll make sure it's on there.
Any further discussion? If not, how do you vote, Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries with all ayes. Moving on to 11D. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs and unpaid rental inspection fees to private properties. Periodically, the city takes action to assess unpaid nuisance abatement costs and rental inspection fees to private properties. The fee being requested for assessment at this time totals $3,075.31. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please. Do we charge interest on that?
We charge an administrative fee, but no interest as far as I understand. We record it, and then it's up to the, when they have to pay their tax bill, they pay it, but I don't believe, other than what they might add on it for interest, I don't, the city doesn't apply any interest to it.
Would you recommend a change in the code that if the people don't pay, they lose their license?
Well, this isn't just for rental properties. It may be nuisance assessments and such like that. So it's not just...
Okay.
So it may not be a license issue at stake. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tom, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11E. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing for the 2016 Asphalt Overlay Project. Each year, the city solicits bids for this program, which is estimated at $845,790.69. Roadway maintenance funding comes from the local option sales tax, $500,000, and from gas tax revenues. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, May 19th, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11F. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the Community Development Block Grant Storm Water Project. On April 21st, 2016, City Council took action to award the contract for this project to Triple B Construction Corporation in the amount of $69,558. At this time, staff is recommending the City Council approve the contract and bond. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Alan? Any discussion? Hearing none. Alan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11G. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve Change Order Number One for the Community Development Block Grant Storm Water Project. Grant funds received for this project totaled $40,000. The contract for the project was awarded to Triple B Construction at the April 21st, 2016, City Council meeting in the amount of $69,558. With this change order, the total contract amount has been amended to $33,682.50. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Did have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
With this change, it will satisfy the needs that we originally intended for the stormwater?
Yes, and it's been approved by the state. Was it, is it DOT? Or is it, it's, what's the office?
IDA. So it's not a compromise as such in purpose?
It meets the requirements of the grant and the stormwater requirements.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11H. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution accepting easements for the Musser Park to Wiggins Road Trail. Due to the change in the routing for the trail, the city renegotiated easements with property owners to include expenses such as fencing and security to allow the city to pay the property owner directly and have them make the improvements they had requested. If done through the trail contract, improvement costs would be subject to federal funding restrictions. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question. Will the fences involved be property owner's discretion, or will the city have any input in that?
As to standards, I'll let Jim answer that question, but the, as to the standards, but basically what we're allowing for is a cash payment. They do the work rather than include it in the contract.
Mayor, council, ask it again one more time?
The fences being built, is that at the property owner's discretion, or will the city have input? The second part of the question is, if they put in six-foot-tall brick, I mean, is there any limitation of how much they can spend that the city will reimburse them for?
Yeah, the limitation will be the amount that was negotiated in that agreement. It's a set amount of dollars.
It's a set.
And it's based upon putting some chain link fence in. If they decide to do something more, it doesn't cost us anymore.
They give us the bill and we reimburse them, or do we reimburse them first?
No, no, it's a negotiated fee. We pay them that fee, and then it's at their discretion. To be honest, it's at their discretion whether they would put a fence in at all. I mean, it's our expectation that they would, because that's what they've requested and that's what they want. But I don't know of any methodology we would have to force them at that point in time. But it would never cost us anymore.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Alan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11I. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on Amendment Number Two for the 2015-2016 City Budget. This proposed amendment will increase total budgeted expenditures for the city by $791,200, and transfers out will increase by $144,900. One of the most significant amendments is a $211,000 request for the replacement of the track loader at the transfer station. There would be a significant cost of repairing the current loader to make it operational, and this repair would not significantly extend the use... and this repair would not significantly extend the useful life of the current loader. This purchase is proposed to be financed with an internal loan from other city funds. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place Thursday, May 19th, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott? Second? Scott first. Tom second. Any discussion?
Greg, have we talked about this before, or is this...
The whole thing, or just the track loader?
The whole thing.
No, this is our annual process. We come back, you know, we do our first amendment as part of the budget process, and then at the end of the year is when we bring this back for council consideration. So tonight's just setting the public hearing, and then there'll be action. There's a nice little summary, second to last paragraph kind of gives you history of the amendments over the past several years, back to 2010, 2011. So we're kind of right in the middle on an average.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tom, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Thought Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11J. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution awarding the sale of $4,600,000 general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2016. Jenny Blankenship of Public Financial Management, the city's financial advisor for this issue, will review the bids received and may make a recommendation for award of this issue. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Alan. Second?
Second.
Tom? Any discussion? Hearing none. Did you have something you'd like to add to it?
I would like to add something if I could.
Sure.
All right, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm Jenny Blankenship, and I am, just thought I'd talk about the process we went through today for the bond issue, since some of you maybe weren't here a couple of years ago when we did this. As you know, these were general obligation corporate purpose bonds, as well as a refunding piece of these bonds, and a couple of weeks ago, you guys actually approved the official statement with all of the information related to this. As part of the process, we went out and we did a rating call with Moody's, and I would like to let you all know that the rating came back as a AA2, which is a very, very strong rating for the state of Iowa. And some of the things that they mentioned in this, in the rating rationale, is that this rating reflects the city's stable, moderately sized tax base, a trend of positive financial operation and improving reserve levels, manageable debt burden, as well as, one of the other things that they commented on was conservative budgeting. So I think that's, should be noted to all of you guys for your budgeting process, as well as Nancy and Greg for all the hard work that they do. I think that that really is reflective in this. And the thing about getting a good rating on this is it decreases the amount of interest that you have to pay on your bonds, so that's always a really good thing to have. And in front of all of you, I added this after the fact, but today before I got here, this is the tabulation of bids, and you will see here that we received seven bids this morning at 10:00 AM. However, several of these bids had a syndicate with them, so there was 38 total bidders throughout the United States that actually bid on these bonds, hoping to win them. I also am happy to say that there was two local banks that were involved, so it's always great to have local presence when we're doing a bond sale like this. And the really great news is that Country Club Bank came in at a true interest rate, which is much like an APR on a car. It takes into consideration not only what they're willing to pay you, but what the interest rate is that you have to pay on that, and that came in at a 1.3817 for bonds that go out through 2026. So we actually compared that to the 2014 bond issue when we sold those, and rates have actually gone down about 35 basis points since 2014, which we didn't think they could go much lower. So I just want to congratulate all of you, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Has our rating changed in recent years?
We've been at a AA2 for the last several years, yes.
How about the footnote at the bottom? Did it decrease in power?
Yep, I can absolutely explain that. So essentially, what happens when an underwriter wants to purchase the bonds, as we all know, there's not very... Interest rates aren't very good if you're an investor. They're great if you're borrowing. But if you're an investor, those investors want to get a higher coupon. They want to get more interest income. And so what the underwriters do at the time of the sale is they actually are willing to pay you more than the face value of the bonds, so that in return, you'll pay them a little bit higher interest rate than what the current yield is, and that's called a premium. So you guys received a premium on these bonds, and because we had enough cushion built in here, we were able to not only keep the premium on the new money portion, so that means a little bit more money came into the fund to help with projects, but on the refunding piece, that I'll get to in a second, we did not want to keep that extra money. We wanted to decrease that amount of those bonds so that you guys could get all of the savings that you could on that. And so that's why we decreased the paramount on this, on the refunding portion of that. And that's a very standard thing in today's, where today's rates are right now, that's something that we see often.
But the effective rate is still the 138?
After we resized it, it's 1.3886. So it just increased just a little bit, yep. And then one other thing, on the back page, that actually does show the savings. So the refunding portion is much like if you were to refinance your home for a lower interest rate. We kind of threw this in because we were going out to the market with new money bonds anyway, so why not try to get some savings if we could? And you guys actually, for two years, for '17 and '18, you guys will have about $35,000 of savings to your debt service levy. So that's great, because we were able to then wrap that new money around that savings to keep your tax rate stable. Any other questions?
Can you touch on the premium amount?
Yeah, I certainly can. When we received the premium today, the total amount was about $256,000 of premium. So essentially, what we were able to do is decrease the current refunding portion by roughly about $50,000, and the additional premium that went to the new money portion was $211,000. So that gave you about $211,000 of additional proceeds to use towards your projects coming up.
Thank you.
And still stay within the level that we thought it would when we ran the numbers originally, so...
Any other questions for Jenny? Thank you so much.
Just a comment that besides our team effort here to get these ratings, and which gets us better rates, I think your firm has done a good job of...
Well, thank you.
You're part of the equation, too.
Thank you. And I definitely want to give a shout out to Greg and Nancy. All the behind-the-scenes stuff that has to go into the official statement, as well as the credit presentation, they spent a lot of time on that, so thanks to you guys and your staff as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One question for Greg is, do we normally post like this credit report on any city website so the citizens can look at it? Because to me, it's kind of a positive report.
We don't have it on the city's website. We did, I did send it out. Moody's did post it publicly as well, but we certainly could post it on the city's website.
Unless there's a reason not to, I would suggest that we post it.
No, it's public document, and Moody's certainly posted it as well.
Because I liked what I heard, and it's the first time I read one about musketeens, so I was kind of pleased with the good things they had to say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
I have a question. We're approving this bid, right? So do we, so your original vote, Alan and Tom, you're okay with the approval of the bid? I just want to make sure.
Correct.
Hearing no other discussion? Tom, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11L. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve the Traffic Committee's recommendation to remove two no-parking signs at Sixth Street and Mulberry Avenue. The business that had requested the signs no longer exists. Removal of the signs will add an additional two to three on-street parking stalls, which will offset the loss of two on-street parking stalls that will occur due to the new pizza business being constructed at that intersection. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Any discussion?
I'd like to just tell the council that when this came before zoning board of adjustment, I was kind of concerned about the loss of parking because of driveways for the new pizza place, so I was kind of a driving force, I kind of, I was the driving force behind asking the Traffic Committee to recommend removing the two stop signs, or no parking signs across the street from the pizza place to help make up for the loss of the parking on Mulberry. That's all.
Thank you, Alan. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11M. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for an automated garbage packer body for refuse collection. One bid was received from Elliott Equipment in the amount of $113,024. This trade-in value for a 2004 refuse collection truck is $17,500 for a final amount of $95,524. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11N. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for a truck chassis for a refuse collection. Three bids were received with the low bid from Quad City Peterbilt in the amount of There is $220,000 budgeted for the purchase of this truck chassis and the packer body, $95,524, previously approved by City Council. There's an additional $2,045 in the equipment budget that will be used toward this purchase. The remaining $412 will be taken from the operating equipment line item of the refuse collection budget. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
These are, this is the second truck with the arm?
Yes, for the carts.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other discussion?
Could ask, what's the delivery on this? Before we get an operating truck?
Mayor and council, when we place this order, which we will do tomorrow or Monday with our companies, it is approximately about a six-to-nine-month process with the truck chassis body company and also with the packer body company working together. We should have this on the street by somewhere in November, December, give or take.
Quite a lead time, really.
Thank you, Laura. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11O. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve change order number two for the airport electrical upgrade project. The grant award for the Iowa Department of Transportation for this project was $60,000. The bid for the project was awarded to Voltmer in the amount of $39,269, leaving $20,731 remaining in grant funds. Staff has worked with the engineer and Voltmer to identify additional work items to be completed in an effort to use the full grant award. Change order number one was completed in the amount of $7,615, and this change order totals $9,450, which leaves $3,666 remaining in grant monies. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
One question, I guess, is, do we have anything, items in mind we can spend the remaining grant money on?
Spare light bulbs.
Spare light bulbs.
While you're walking up here, Adam, the numbers in the resolution don't tie to the supportive memo. The amount of change order number one is different?
Yeah, and I'll explain that in the memo. So in change order number two, there is a deduction as well. There were some work items that were listed in change order number one that, after doing the testing that was also included in change order number one, that they didn't have to complete. So that's why that number for change order one is reduced in what Mayor Broderickson read. In regards to, is there more that's going to be done? I really don't see that. I think this is the last significant improvement that will be done with the funds that we have available for this project. You know, we really have worked hard with all parties involved to get as much out of this grant and as much of this project as possible, and with, you know, the $3,666 remaining, I don't see there being a significant improvement that we will make with those funds.
Now, after this drive is complete, in years past, there's been underground critter problems. Is that going to be non-issue from now on?
Well...
Because we buried the underground in, what, conduit or something like that?
We have not had critter issues at the airport since we put the main runway in conduit. You guys know better how long ago that was.
Two years ago, maybe?
Yeah, it is, well...
Three?
When did you go on?
By the time you showed up.
Yeah, I guess a little bit before I showed up.
We started, we started dealing with the critters when I was on there.
So that's like six years.
And then we started doing the conduit when he went on.
Six years, so it's, we haven't had issues with critters since then. They're still down there, but they're not getting into the electrical systems.
Good.
Our biggest issue is lightning, which hopefully this improvement will help.
Help lightly?
Yes, yep.
Adam, to save you another trip up later, how's the runway project? I don't realize it's, you know, it's not going to be complete until late summer, fall, but...
Yep, yeah, the project is well underway. We had our meeting with the contractor today, and the contractor is ahead of schedule. He is well into pavement removal and pavement crushing. Half of the millings have been completed, so the project is well underway, ahead of schedule, and will be completed by August, is what the schedule says right now when the project will be complete.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11P. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve change orders number one and number two for the Clark House Domestic Hot Water Heater Project. The contract for this project was awarded to J.L. Brady on February 18th, 2016, in the amount of $49,478. During the project, change orders number one and number two arose totaling $1,746. These change orders resulted in a final project cost of $51,224. All funding for this project is from the Capital Fund Program Grant received from the U.S. the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11Q. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve Change Orders 2016 through 8001 and 2016 through 8002 for Phase 3B of the sewer separation project. The city needed to reconstruct streets taken out because of this project. During this process, the contractor encountered unsuitable soils requiring extra work to stabilize the subgrade prior to placing the aggregate subbase and PCC pavement. Change Order 2016 through 8001 totals $4,940. And Change Order 2016, 8002 resulted in a credit of $2,807 for a net increase to the contract of $2,133. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Your Honor, a second.
We have Phil for a first and Scott for a second.
Mike.
Mike and Phil. Any discussion? Or I'm sorry, Mike and Scott. Is there a motion to approve? We got those two. Any more discussion? Nope. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. 11R. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve an engineering services agreement for rehabilitation of Cleveland Street from Second Avenue to the Park Avenue Frontage Road. The street department has designated this portion of Cleveland Street for rehabilitation. The city received a proposal from Martin &amp; Whitaker for this survey and design services in the amount of $24,000. Staff is recommending the approval of the agreement. The actual project is scheduled to take place after July 1, 2016. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. Moving down to 14 on the agenda. Anything you'd like to share tonight, Scott?
Uh, no, thank you, Your Honor.
Bob?
I'm sorry.
Anything you'd like to share tonight, Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alan?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Mike?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Staff?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I just had a couple of things. First of all, I had a lot of calls and I would like to thank Laura, she's here tonight, for the wonderful job we had with Spring Cleanup Week this past week. It's a crazy week, I know, for staff, and our citizens really appreciate the services that we get. Secondly, I would like to share that our next coffee with the mayor is going to be May 21 at Happy Joe's at 9:00 on Lake Park Boulevard. We had a good turnout and thank you to everyone who came. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.